Good evening, everyone. We're gonna get the October 6th, 2025, 7:00 PM, regular board meeting to order. Secretary, please call the roll.
Valencia?
Here.
Cepuentes?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Olivas?
Here.
LaShay?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Moreno?
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, before we, uh, I'm gonna need the public comment, um, sign up sheet. Alright, but before we go into the public comments sheet, I did want to move ahead one item, um, prior to public comments, and that is 4.8, which is a student board member report. Do I have any issues with that?
Yeah.
Okay, that way, that way the student can then return back home and do some homework.
Perfect. So with that, I would like to have our new student board member come up. We have Zeon Laliwala. Uh, this is Zeon's first, uh, public comment to the board and to the community. So let's give him a warm round of applause, please.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the student body. In my first report, I'd like to highlight some events that we've had recently at East Shore High School. Last week was homecoming week, and we started off with each graduate in class having the opportunity to represent their own values and interests by decorating their own hallways. We also had Spirit Day events throughout the week. On Monday, different classes dressed as different phases of life, from childhood to senior citizenship. Next, we had Bring Anything But a Backpack Day, Twin Day, and Class Color Day. Teachers also participated on Thursday by wearing pajamas. Friday was Blackout Day, and we also had our pep assemblies on our fall sports teams and our first ever girls' flag football team. There were performances led by our dance team, cheer team, and band. Throughout the week, we also had Students vs. Faculty volleyball, karaoke, and a movie night. Friday night featured our homecoming football game with the Pink Out theme. NHS ran fade spacing during the game, and Spanish NHS sold hot chocolate and other treats. We had Tomcat Cheer Alumni Night from years past at the game to cheer on our Tomcats as well. That night, our homecoming court nominees were also announced. We had a halftime performance led by our band. We had an incredible turnout and level of engagement, and it was not a game to miss. Finally, on Saturday night, we had our homecoming dance. The gym was transformed to fit our Under the Stars theme, and our DJ led an unforgettable night. There were also food trucks and drinks available at the game, and our homecoming royalty were also announced. While these events alone are extremely exciting, the best part of last week was the fact that so many student groups came together, not only to experience these events, but to actively contribute to them as well. Our class of 2026 especially flourished in leadership roles, and many of the events, many of the events mentioned were originally student ideas from student council or different societies and ended up being student-led. From selling tickets to drinks, uh, to helping decorate, students were extremely engaged and took ownership of the experiences of the entire school. Again, I greatly appreciate this opportunity to represent the student body and speak on behalf of East Shore. Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna start with, uh, public comment. In order to speak at the board, you would have had to sign in before 7:00 PM. Respect the three-minute time limit, respect the confidentiality of students and staff, and make sure to keep, uh, comments appropriate. We'll start with the first one, Cynthia Latimer.
It is unfortunate that we are here again having to speak about this issue. And let me be clear, I am not interested in your board politics. This is about our children, and the only reason each of you sit around this table, including the administration. Every word you speak, every action you take has a direct impact, positive or negative, on the students of this district. The statements made by Ms. Reyes were not offhand or private. They were said, they were not said around the family dinner table nor at a backyard barbecue. They were spoken with intention, with thought, emphasis, pauses, and examples, made in a formal setting on district property during a process meant to earn a seat on the board, a position of trust and authority over our children. They were said in a setting where one's views are shared to convince others that based on their views, that they are fit for this board. She stated a belief that some students, specifically black students, should be denied access to a board-approved opportunity, and that belief was offered as a qualification to gain a position on this board. So whether Ms. Reyes was a sitting board member at that moment or a seeking member is frankly irrelevant. It was and is directly related to this board seat. She said what she said, and now she sits among you. And what she said was and is inappropriate and wrong. And if those of you who were present said nothing, then silence becomes agreement. Your silence tells this community that discrimination is acceptable, that it's fine to deny opportunities for some children so that others can have an advantage or keep an advantage. Three weeks ago, I asked all of you to go on record, because your silence also speaks. The community has asked you to act on this issue. You have received a properly submitted letter requesting that the issue be placed on the board agenda, which would allow you to speak and formally act on a censure. Yet there's been no resignation, no censure, and no accountability. Because none of you have spoken on this issue, your inaction now reflects that each of you all agree that her comments were acceptable. If that's the case, then this is a bigger issue, and perhaps others should also consider stepping down. Our children deserve leaders who will advocate for all of them. Either uphold your vision to ensure that every child reaches their full potential or have the integrity to remove it from your website, and step aside so that someone who believes it can lead. Act, don't play politics with our children's futures. Be the example they deserve to see. Why hasn't she stepped down? Why hasn't there been a censure? Why is inaction the response to injustice? If this is about politics, then you've lost your sight of your purpose, and our children are the ones that pay the price. Now let's get this addressed, resolved, so that the district can focus on the only reason it exists, which is our children and the teaching and learning for all of them.
Thank you, Ms. Latimer. Next speaker, Vincent Gaddis.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Vincent Gaddis, and I share the unfortunate fact that I'm here again, uh, this month. I wanna reflect on Ms. Reyes's written statement from the last board meeting, uh, where your argument was that in your confusion, your nervousness of this interview, uh, you said these unfortunate words that bring us here again tonight. Well, I wanna take a pause from that for a minute, uh, because in psychology, we know that there are things called structural beliefs. A structural belief is that belief on which all other beliefs are attached to. I'll give you an example. When I became a Christian, my structural beliefs changed. And then everything else had to change to line up with those structural beliefs. So when we're nervous, when we're confused, when we don't know what's happening in the interview, we are, you know, I'm, I'm nervous, where do we speak from? The deepest part of what we know, and those are structural beliefs. And here we are. Why is this important? Because if this is what you're speaking from at that moment, then it's not a matter that, oh, I just misspoke. It's that you spoke from the place of your most confident belief, that black children don't deserve all this equity and inclusion that other children do. So here we are. So let's assume that you learned something, what you said in your letter that you read last month. Maybe you've examined your beliefs, maybe your apology was genuine. If so, meet with us. Meet with leaders, meet with parents, propose the changes that show that you are willing and want to be a champion for black kids, for Latino kids, for white kids. All the children of this district show that you actually have a belief that you want to, and I quote, "educate and empower all students to reach their full potential." Because if you do not, and if you do not do anything but stay silent, we know what all of your structural beliefs actually are.
Thank you. Driya Donaldson?
Hi, my name is Driya Donaldson, and I wanted you to really see what a student from the dual-language program looks like. Uh, my daughter shouldn't have the same access as your daughter. She's actually in classes with your daughter. Uh, Jocelyn also pointed out that the boys that are on the picture here, those are boys that she knows from the dual-language program. So you have a, a, a black boy next to a Latino boy, but that's not what you believe, though. Even though these are the images that you have, and I wanna make sure that you look at the face and tell me that my daughter doesn't deserve the same opportunity as your daughter because she's black? Tell me! And just, just as Dr. said, you were confused and everything. Now, in your right mind, do you think that my child should not have the same opportunities as your child? As a parent, I, I just wanna know. Or anybody up here, should my daughter not have the same access to the program? She's been in it since it started, along with your daughter and along with those children. So when you say hurtful things like that, I want you to make sure that you see the face. You see what it impact. It's not just that you say something quietly in a room and it goes away. That is devastating. My daughter has been with your kid. She's been, been, she's talked to her, that's a friend of hers. How do you think we feel to know that my, this is a friend, but your mother really hates us? Come on now. I'm asking you. No, don't shake your head, cuz you ain't, you have, you have done nothing to show that you're sorry. You sit up here like you can't wait till this is over, uh, but I want you to know that it's affecting people's lives. It's affecting parents and students. We have every right to opportunities, just as anybody else. And that's it, come on, baby.
Thank you. Dr. Peggy Hicks?
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm Dr. Peggy Hicks, and I'm here tonight again, we're here again, to address the impact of the statement that was made by Myra Reyes concerning our black children, our African-American children. And, uh, we, the statement was mean-spirited, derogatory, and inflammatory, causing profound trauma to our children and to our community. At the last meeting, we heard a scripted apology. And I have a question for all of you guys sitting here. Will you continue to remain silent of the injustices that was spoken concerning our children? Will you continue to sit here and do nothing because you're part of the problem, the board? Do you believe that this statement was hurtful and racially motivated? Have you, as a board member, done your due diligence? Have you? Obviously not, we're back here. I think this is meeting, and we've had meetings with the superintendent and, and others, and we've gotten nowhere. And we want you to know tonight that we're gonna continue to stand for our children, because, Juan, if I believe it was your child and you felt like that child was oppressed and discriminated against, you'd be standing here too. Superintendent, the same thing for you. If it was your child, you'd be standing here too. So, so we want you to do something about this injustice. This is so disheartening to think that in 2025, we're back to 1960. Very disheartening. Again, we reference your mission, to educate and empower all students to reach their full potential. When you have tribalization, how do you expect them to reach their full potential? So again, as my sister Latimer said, you need to take it down if you're not gonna represent. There's a quote that was made by Desmond Tutu, and I'm gonna leave this with you, and I hope that you will not be a do-nothing board, but you will address this issue head-on. And you knew about the issue before, before it became a real problem. And we're not here for political stances. We're here to represent our black children. And Desmond Tutu said, "If you are neutral in a situation of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." Myra Reyes is the oppressor. Thank you.
Next speaker, Regina Brent.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not here to preach tonight, I'm here to teach. I want you to know that this week is one of our most popular leaders I consider in this country. He's ill now, he's in a wheelchair, he cannot speak. His name is Reverend Jesse Louis Jackson. This is his birthday this week. And I found something on the internet just before I got here saying that he had a fireside chat back in 2017, I believe, with, uh, a well-known Hispanic leader, Mrs. Reyes. And he reminded the gentleman about the fact that Dr. King, Dr. King had written a letter to Claudia Gonzalez Romo. And he reminded them how Dr. King assembled the civil rights movement, and the letter was to Cesar Chavez, recognizing the suffering of farmworkers as a shared cause. So I'm saying that in essence, I thought we had something in common, that I would be feeling secure about my people whenever your people was approached with giving them an opportunity of a lifetime. I wanna say to you that I enjoyed Ozzy Gilliam. I'm wearing a White Sox hat from Venezuela. Had a lot of respect for him, only to hear about your demise, because that's what it's gonna be. I wanna say to this board tonight, with all due respect, cuz I ran for office out here, and I understood the principle of a fiduciary oath, that when you take that, you're supposed to be upholding the principles of a human being. I'm hoping, I wish today, when Sandra Bland was found hung in her cell, that somebody had come by to at least monitor her stay there. She would be with us today. Trayvon Martin, Zimmerman, Hispanic. I wish somebody had have been there to stop him. Freddie Gray, same thing, six or seven officers. Eric Gardner, Laquan McDonald. We can go on and on and on. Breanna Taylor. If just somebody had been there to say, "Get your knee off of George Floyd's neck. Don't, don't speak ill, ill about these people. These are black race people. Don't, hey, don't hit him again. Get Eric Gardner up off that ground." If somebody had just been there to say that, but you know what, they didn't. And so now, Mrs. Reyes is your poster child of your board. So that means you're complicit and you're in a treatment of what she's doing.
Ms. Brent?
I'm asking you, for the greater good of people, Mrs. Reyes, please step down. Step down.
Alright, next speaker, Randy Ryder.
Everyone has come up here and tried to probe your motives. They seem very, very clear to me. It's obvious you don't respect our community at all. I have never seen such a bunch of feckless cowards in my entire existence. You sit up there every meeting, silent, looking at us as if we're crazy for being up here talking to you. I'm here to tell you, I'm done playing with you. I've already filed paperwork. So you don't, that's the only thing you're gonna, you people are gonna understand. You have the power to remove this bigot off the, off the, off the, off the, uh, board. All it takes is a simple vote, a majority vote of you. But you don't have the kahunas to do it. I don't care whether you like my language or not. I'm talking directly to all of you. This is ridiculous. We are a part of this community. Our children go to school here, and we gotta deal with that? None of you are above reproach. None of you. Which one of you will stand up right now and raise your hand and say, "Get her off the board"? I'll bet money that none of you have the heart to do it, cuz you're a bunch of cowards. I'm not gonna keep wasting my time coming up here talking to you people, cuz it goes in one ear and out the other. This is the third, fourth time I've been here personally. You don't care about our kids. You don't, you don't give a damn about our kids. If you did, you'd act. But you won't, because they're expendable to you. They're not expendable to me. If it were up to me, every one of you'd lose your seat. Every one of you. None of you are worth the time it takes to stand up here. She'll be here next month. She'll be here next year.
Your time is up, sir.
Yeah, I guess it is.
Thank you. Next speaker, Benson Maravilla.
My name is Benson Maravilla. I am part of the four wards. And I'm here, I got listening to them. I suffer a heart attack. In, uh, two weeks, I'm going to have an open-heart surgery. My wife has cancer. And some of these people that, that they were talking about discrimination, about mistreating the people, they used to do that when I worked at the youth center. We had a very good program, and every board meeting, it was, "Oh, the soccer, uh, kids that are discriminating against the African, uh, uh, the basketball players." For me, they humiliate our kids, but thanks to, to the humiliation, thanks to them here. I'm just going to show it to you. What you did, here you have, he went to the University of Aurora. University, he's a coach now. He was the best soccer player in the, in the, uh, the United States. This guy, he has his own company. And see, every week, we had to go, I had to see my wife crying because of the humiliation. I saw the kids that they were crying because they didn't have documents. And these people, instead of saying, "You know what? We have to work together, we have to do, no." Every night, I even went to that thing to kill myself because all the humiliation that I got in that place. And see, if, if you see here, I was chosen to represent Illinois for the Mexican government. Why? Because we had such a small field and such a small, uh, youth center. But thanks to the parents working together with the police, with everything, we were able to reduce the crime to nothing. Now, you have, uh, coaches at different, uh, di- di- different high schools, even at the Wabanci Community College. And these people, they didn't think that they were able to make it. They always put them down, and now they are here asking for her to remove her. At that time, every board meeting, every month, every month, every month, there used to be the same song. How can we work together? And I even had to send a letter that my grandkids, half of them, they are Latino, African-American. Why did I have to do that? None of them, they did that. And now they are, that's a reason that as a board, work with, uh, everyday people. A lot of the, they always work with the nonprofit organizations, but we had international programs too. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three additional speakers. Um, is it okay to continue on? I know we have board policy that we only typically go around 20 minutes, but we only have three left, so we had consensus? Okay. Alright, next speaker, Juanita Wells.
As a former board member of District 131 from 1993 to 2011, I encourage dual-language as part of the curriculum. However, it wasn't instituted when I served on the board. I recall visiting the Early Childhood Learning Center on Indian Trail as a sitting board member and heard one of the teachers ask a question in Spanish, and an African-American student responded. She asked the same question in English, and a Hispanic student responded. I was overjoyed to discover students were teaching each other different languages even before dual-language was officially part of the district curriculum. It was involving by efforts of the students. I also recall when a sitting, when sitting board members wanted to remove English as a second language from the district and the outcry of Hispanic community. I do not recall the community to ask any board members to resign. They focused on correcting the issue. I also remember, uh, sitting board members asking the Boys to Men Program not to be part of District 131, even though it was not part of the curriculum nor was it an after-school program in the district. Students involved in the group were encouraging other young men to join the group because of the social skills offered and educational opportunities. The group mirrored students' population in the Roy area. The Boys to Men mentoring young men, students to the district, offering difference, positive influence. No one asked the board members to resign. I am saying all this to say, there has always been conflicting interest in all school districts over the years concerning our students. They were addressed, they were corrected, and will continue to be corrected. And opinions, opinions would continually be voiced as long as everyone had a different opinion. The comments of dual-language discussed a year ago in a closed session was not spoken by a sitting board member or as an action item on the board's agenda to address, nor did the board select to seat the candidate to fill a vacant position that made the statement in a closed-session interview. The community elected her in the 2025 election. This board is comprised of members, the community... This board is comprised of members the community selected using the voting process. I have to admit, I have not been included in the various discussion, but watched the live September 15th board meeting online. I am in support of all students having equal standing and learning skills that will allow them to be successful. However, I, Juanita Wells, not in favor of Ms. Reyes resigning.
Ms. Wells, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Claudia Ruiz.
Good evening, my name is Claudia Ruiz. I am a parent in the district. Um, I came to talk about something different than the rest of the other speakers, but I do share their sentiment as well, so, um, in solidarity. Um, I actually, uh, wanted to come speak to all of you, um, to so quote unquote, get the ball rolling and a couple of things. And, um, just kind of, uh, put that conversation out there. Um, when you are doing, um, online registration and you're trying to pay fees and things like that, I know it's like totally tone deaf and I'm so sorry. Um, um, I was thinking if there is any programs that we could use or we could initiate, um, to have those like fees and things like that paid online. As opposed to having to pay cash or like a check. Um, I've been speaking to various parents around the district and we've talked about having the convenience of being able to pay those things online. On your phone, just like you would use the app, like synergy or whatever app that we're using at the moment, um, to log in, to check the attendance and things like that, to have, uh, readily available to pay those fees. Uh, that's something that we talked about. Another thing that, uh, some of the parents talked about at the East Aurora High School is, uh, creating a ramp, um, on one side of the stadium. Or what that would look like, or to see if maybe get what, some kind of ball rolling again. Um, so the kids who are in band, my three children are in band, uh, they're all at the high school. Um, they often have to roll carts and things of instruments across through, basically down the road and then around the stadium, through the stadium. Just to get to the stadium when they're performing for marching band and things like that. I think starting, um, a conversation about getting a ramp, not only for the band students, but it could benefit any, uh, for sports and any other, um, events that we have, it'd just be easier access. Um, because door six is directly through that entrance that would, uh, have that direct ramp to the stadium. So those are a couple of things that I wanted to bring up to the board and maybe start the conversation. Um, and again, I'm so sorry that my, um, comment is a little tone deaf, but, um, I do stand in solidarity with the rest of the speakers before me, thank you.
All right, thank you. And the last speaker is Curtis Wilson.
May I begin? Good evening. So I scarcely know where to begin. When I sit back and think of the comments that were made, um, in a job interview. If it had been Miss Annette, someone who's Caucasian, or Mr. Bernie, or Mr. Andy, or Mr. Dr. David, or even Jude, or Dr. Amy, or Dr. Michael, or John. The community would have had your hands on a platter. Why is bigotry acceptable in 2025 depending on who it comes from? It's unacceptable at all levels, all levels. I have friends of every persuasion. If you know anything about me, my goal is to serve, is to serve the community regardless of what you look like, your age, your district, none of that matters. Because at the end of the day, as Dr. Gadda said, my faith compels me to show you love, to show you love. And the comments that I read were the antithesis of what I believe. One of the things that bothers me about, um, unmitigated or unchecked bigotry is that it becomes like a cancer, it's insidious. It will waft around and latch on to others and pull them in. And then what does that do? That deteriorates our society and our community where I don't see you as a brother or a sister. I see you by some demographic, by some artificial, uh, variable and I demean you, I take away your humanity. That's a problem. I don't see you as a competitor or someone who I need to, um, to diminish. I see you as a community member, as my neighbor. I see you as someone who I work with, who I, uh, looking to expire, uh, inspire and to, um, to, uh, to, to build together with. This was an absolutely disgusting thing and I see you sitting here looking at me now with this look of just discontent, this look of just total disgust. But I'm unbothered by that because I know what makes you cheer. So I don't care what you're bothered by because I've seen what makes you cheer. I've seen what you've told your colleagues in closed session in a job interview. That's unacceptable. I just, I'm, I'm unbelie, I, I just can't believe in 2025, not 1825, talking about wanting and rampant bigotry as far as someone's core values, as Dr. Gaddis has said. These are heart issues, out of the mouth flows the issues of the heart. And so with that, I encourage you to self-evaluate. We would welcome your resignation, but I know it's probably not gonna happen. We'd welcome a censure, it's probably not gonna happen. But know that this, this will judge you, this will determine how you're seen in this community from this day forward. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Um, before we continue on with the regular board meeting, um, I did want to address one thing and that has to do with the censure. Um, you know, I did receive a request by email from community members for a censure. And, you know, I did reply back that I did have to check with our legal representative. And Bernie, if you could give a brief response to that, please?
Uh, yes, there are, there were two components, uh, to the request. Uh, and they have, uh, the answer to that request has, has, uh, different, um, uh, has, has different results, okay? So with regard to, uh, the, the request was couched in a mo-, uh, a request to place on the agenda. A motion to censure a member of the, uh, of the Board of Education for comments that were made. Uh, prior to, uh, her appointment or election to the board. Uh, with regard to that, um, censure has a specific meaning and specific consequences. Uh, that must be, uh, must be dealt with in accord with the policies of the board that are now existing. Uh, those policies are based upon a code of conduct for board members. Uh, that code of conduct adopt, is adopted by, uh, adopts the, uh, Illinois School Board, um, associations, um, press policies. Uh, with regard to the code of conduct and that code of conduct is reflected, uh, in the oath that all of the board members take. So with respect to that, that code of conduct pertains to actions taken while a member of the Board of Education. Uh, it does not, um, accord, um, sanctioning a statement made by a private citizen. Uh, whether or not that's made, uh, in a board meeting, uh, in either an open or closed session. With regard to the, um, so a censure, uh, is a disciplinary proceeding. And our policies say that where, um, such requests are not covered by our board policies. That they are then deferred to the Roberts Rule of Order. The Roberts Rule of Order, uh, with regard to board discipline is found in section 20, chapter 20, um, of the current rules. And they also apply only to conduct that appears in the, uh, appears in the, uh, that occurs during, uh, service as a member of that, uh, community. Uh, private citizens, um, are not, uh, are not sanctioned, uh, for, uh, specific statements that are made as a private citizen. Now, also with regard to that, that is in keeping with the disciplinary policies of the state of Illinois. With regard to this board's authority to remove a member, uh, that is covered by the Illinois School Code. Which defers to the superintendent of, uh, the regional superintendent of schools. The authority to remove a board member for the failure to undertake the responsibilities of a board member. During service as a member of the board. So with regard to the sanction that, uh, you know, censure has a specific meaning, uh, and that is a sanction. And specifically, that can be in conflict with our policies that support people's, uh, right to speak. So, uh, sanctioning someone for speaking as an, uh, as an individual and as a member of the, uh, as a member of the community. Uh, is not something that is called for. Now, having said that, uh, the request was to put this on the agenda, uh, for a, a motion to sanction. So to the extent that that motion to sanction, uh, is not an appropriate matter. Then becomes the, uh, the issue of what does the board have the authority to do at a meeting such as this? So whether or not a matter is on the agenda, does not prohibit this board or any member. From discussing an issue that is not on the agenda or from making statements as it relates to. Conduct of anyone that has occurred under any circumstances that affect the, um, the integrity of this board. So to that extent, the board is free to, uh, make comment with regard to, uh, any issue that they, they may wish to address.
Well, thank you. So I do have a statement, uh, from the board. And I apologize, I'm, I'm still sick, I started with a cold last week and so if I call for anything, I apologize. So, "The Board of Education of East Aurora School District 131 stands united in denouncing the statement made a year ago by a resident of the district during a closed session. Who has since been elected to the board. That suggested providing dual language services to African American students would somehow disadvantage our bilingual Hispanic students. Such a sentiment does not reflect the values of this board, nor the community we serve. We affirm with clarity and compassion that this Board of Education has never considered, will not consider and will not take any action that deprives any student. Of the services and opportunities they deserve. Every child in East Aurora is entitled to an education that uplifts, supports and respects their unique needs, culture and potential. This board embraces both the letter and the spirit of our policies that guarantee fair and equitable treatment for all students and staff. I ask each board member, I ask each member of the board to reaffirm their individual commitment to our shared mission. To educate and empower every student to reach their fullest potential in an environment rooted in equity, inclusion and dignity. In pursuit of excellence, we, the board, remain committed to fostering a culture of respect, collaboration and trust. We acknowledge and deeply respect the concerns expressed by community leaders and families who feel that trust has been shaken. We hear you and we commit to listening, learning and acting with integrity. Our policies carry meaning only when they are lived out in our actions. As part of that commitment, this board will be engaged, uh, engaging in training to root out unconscious bias. Ensuring that our decisions, conduct and words reflect our values of equity and inclusion. We will seek a program that strengthens our collective understanding and enhances our ability to continue serving all students with fairness and compassion. We also call on our superintendent to join us in this work, ensuring that our students and staff experience the benefits of our policies. Not as a promise on paper, but as a lived reality in their schools and daily interactions. Together, we will nurture culture where equity and inclusion are not aspirations, but expectations. Furthermore, we recognize the importance of giving our community meaningful opportunities beyond elections to shape how our district lives out these values. You know, we are committed to creating new avenues for community voice and participation, ensuring that no one feels excluded from the table where opportunities for our children are created. We, the board, welcome the active participation and constructive feed, uh, feedback from our community. And we are grateful for the courage of those who have spoken up. We embrace this as an opportunity to grow together with humility and hope. And we look forward to continued dialogue and building stronger, more inclusive, inclusive structures of trust. So at this point, I do ask that each member of this board join in endorsing this statement and commit to moving forward together in service of every child in East Aurora. And we'll start with Mr. Lofton.
Yes, I absolutely do. I'm gonna keep a short speech. Thank you to the African American community for expressing their concerns. I do not support the inappropriate comment made at an interview for an open board seat a year ago. But remember, Ms. Reyes was not picked to fill that seat. The Yodea Gillespie was fixed, picked to fill that seat. I have not seen any racism whatsoever from Ms. Reyes or anyone on this board. No one has ever contacted me about any unfair treatment of African Americans nor any group since I've been a board member. In two years as a board member, I can only remember two instances where I thought race might even remotely be an issue. And one, I reached out to a leader of your community and I was told that they wouldn't get involved because they didn't know the person, okay? The other was a situation in April this year where a union representative complained to Dr. Halverson about what, um, she felt there might be a racial issue. Mr. Halverson immediately took action and removed that administrator going forward from those meetings. The release of information in a closed session is improper. It's a violation of our policies. Perhaps you should look at, why was this tape released? Why was this brought? Was it really to protect racism or was it for political gain? But however, Dr. Halverson said, he has discovered some issues. So he's hired a consultant. He's gonna work on the climate and culture. I know as a board member, when I came in two years ago, it was a big issue. I never heard racism, but if that's present, we're gonna fix it. I'm a bull in a china shop, everyone will tell you, it's, it's not gonna stay long. If we have racism here, it's not gonna happen. Ms. Reyes was asked if she would step down. But she said she worked too hard to get elected. And anybody who's been an elected official knows, it takes a lot of work. I must have knocked down a thousand doors when I got elected, okay? So it takes a collective group. We would love to have an African American representative on this board. So you put one up and we will support them, I will, I'm sure that most of us will. Mrs. Ms. Reyes has agreed to voluntary take on bias training. And Dr. Halverson has shown a willingness to listen and tackle the heart issues. He's only been our superintendent for six months, okay? So let's give him time to fix the issue. I'm a practicing attorney, I have a lot of experience with discrimination. You might remember Mooseheart, the case where the IHSA passed a bylaw. They wouldn't let an African student from Congo play sports. I sued the IHSA. Three years of my life, pro bono, no pay. We won and he got to play. They appealed it to the appellate court in Elgin and Illinois Supreme Court and we won them all. You think I'm gonna let discrimination happen? I started Streetwise, the homeless paper in Chicago, 33 years ago. We've helped 17,000 homeless people. Eighty-four percent of them are African American. I've never taken any money for that. You think I'm gonna let discrimination happen here? Not gonna happen. I would like to reiterate Mr., what Mr. Wyler said in a more common, understandable, um, expression. That the board does not have any authority whatsoever to remove Ms. Reyes. Think about it, anytime there's a four-three board, we can remove anybody we want, just conceptually. But the law is, we can't do it, she's an elected official. And once you're elected, there's, you wait, you, you vote at the ballot box, there's an election in two years. She gave an apology at our board meeting on 9/16. We're all volunteers on this board. Let's make this a teachable moment, let's move past this, let's try and move ahead. And I'm gonna close with this. Many of yous in this, many of the leaders in this crowd are Christians and part of the minister alliance. I heard Dr. Gadda say it. The Bible says, forgive us our sins and we have forgiven our sin against us. Hey, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's how I feel, anyway. Any leaders have issues, you contact me, most of you have my cell phone, you know how to get ahold of me? Contact me, we will take action. Thank you.
Mr. Alivas?
I don't have a
I don't have a statement like Mr. Lofsky here, but I am joining and endorsing this statement to commit to moving together as a whole. Many of you personally know me, know who I am, know the many hours that I've worked in this community, community, working with everyone here in Aurora. So again, I am committed to working together to ensuring that our district moves forward, to ensuring our students, all students, get what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanya?
I also endorse the statement that Cipolentis provided. But I also have another statement that I prepared just in case. I want to begin by acknowledging that I am no stranger to making mistakes. I've been someone who at times has spoken before fully thinking things through and I've had to learn from those moments. I've always seen them as opportunities for growth and I imagine many of us in this room have had similar experiences. That's why I want to approach this situation with both honesty and compassion. Unlike some, I had the opportunity to listen to Myra's full interview, not through word of mouth or social media, but through the proper channels. What I heard was more complex than what has been portrayed. Yes, there were some comments that were found troubling, I respect that. Yet those comments were part of a larger conversation in which Myra spoke proudly about our children's, oh, sorry, about our district's leadership in dual language education. She talked about how these programs allow others to step into our world as Latinos and how communication is only effective when both people share a language. That matters. What concerns me is that this nuance is being lost, that some are only hearing what they want to hear, others may have been misinformed, and some, perhaps intentionally, are stoking division between Black and Brown communities. If that's the case, I must ask, has that been the, the goal all along? Because we know that when our communities unite, we are powerful. We are capable of real lasting change. But when we're divided, we weaken our ability to advocate for the students and families we all claim to care about. To the person who started this, I don't know your reasons, but I do know that this, that, but I do know this. As a community, we are better than this. Every board member here is a volunteer. We serve because we want our community to thrive, because we believe our children deserve equitable opportunities and our staff deserves a supportive environment in which to grow. I reject depriving any child of any program or service in the district. I have never had the slightest inclination of differentiating between any race, gender, or creed. Myra apologized. I ask that we at least receive that apology in good faith. She is not the enemy. The real threat is our inability to work together, especially as people of color. We have a chance to model something better, not just for our students, but for our entire district. Let's reject this narrative of division. Let's choose unity. Let's choose, or let's show our children, all of them, what it looks like when leaders make mistakes, reflect, and we all come together for the greater good. On April first, the community spoke and that Johnson received a thousand six hundred and twenty-two votes. Myra followed with a thousand four hundred and thirteen. I had the honor of receiving a thousand one hundred and ninety-nine and that's just twenty votes ahead of Theodia. On May fifth, we elected Juan C. Fuentes as board president, Saul Oliveras as vice president, and Judd was unanimously selected as secretary. This is the team the community and board voted for. This is how we move forward together.
Ms. Johnson?
So I wanted to agree with the statements that you made. One, I wanted to just say that, you know, we have created a environment here with the board that we want to ensure that all of the students, staff, and community have what they need from the school district to be successful. I wanna talk about the school district for a few minutes. You know, many of you know me and you know me for the last sixteen years and I have certainly worked very hard to make sure that everything was equitable for all of our students, that our students had the same things that other, other school districts who are more affluent. And it's been hard with District 131 because we so much rely on, on the state and the federal government for our revenue. So, so we did that and, and I have been totally committed to doing that. And I want our board to get back to the many issues that the district faces, which we have to do something about our declining enrollments. We have to do something about the fact that we have lost state and federal revenues. As a community, we need to come together because many today are fearful of going to school. And that, again, is, is a horrible thing, that a child can be denied an education just because they're afraid to go to school. How sad is that? It's only gonna hold, it's only gonna erode the school district more because we're gonna continue to see more declining enrollments. And, and that's gonna take a lot of dollars away to, to be fair and equitable to all children. We have teacher shortages. That is difficult. And we have to make sure that our current staff has all of the tools necessary that they can, they can work with our students today. So these are not all small issues because today, if the board doesn't address these issues, we will go back to things that have, have not been seen in this district for the last fifteen years. And I know many of you in the audience personally, and not sure who said it, I didn't have a note, but I do want the district and the board to start creating dialogue with the community. I did talk to Ms. Reyes before the board meeting. We had a long chat and I, and I do know that she as well is committed to this. We just, as a board member, have to come, come forward and serve and solve all these community issues. You know, I'll always continue to hold our board here and our administration and whoever else very accountable to make sure that every child has what they need. So again, I am endorsing your statement, Mr. Splentis.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Moreno?
I too endorse your statement, Juan, and I have a statement too. I want the community to know that we see you and we hear you. This should never be an issue about Black or Brown. It should be an issue of red and black. Because we are all Tomcats and we're all one community. And to be honest, we're one Aurora too. Much like many of us in this board and many in the audience tonight, I was raised right here in this district. And one of the things I love most about East Aurora is our diversity and unity. What I learned during my time as a student is that we can be proud of our individual cultures while also respecting and supporting the cultures of others. As a Latino growing up in East Aurora, some of my biggest role models in life were Black. Many of the people I probably call my brothers are Black. And I helped lead an organization dedicated to bringing Black and Latino young men together back when they were killing each other. And that's called Boyz to Men. When it comes to unity, I'm not new to it. I'm true to it. That's why when I hear comments that divide us, it makes me sick. We hear all this at the federal level and now that's coming right here at a local level, at a smaller level, it hurts me too. You know, because it shouldn't get to a level that it is today. Board member Myra raised comments about not being in support of this dual language program, maybe because she rephrased or whatever and I know Vanya said that it extended more, but the moment that she at least gave an example affects us all. And tonight, I wanna go on record stating that I do not support those comments or the sentiments from which they came. I believe all students and all students in East Aurora and throughout the city of Aurora, regardless of race, background, or language, deserve equal access to our education and co-curricular programs because we are here to give them the best opportunity that they deserve. Because when we went to school, it wasn't like this. Now there's so many things out there that we wish we would have had growing up. And now that's why we're here. I feel like if you're as a board member, we're here to keep on exciting, keep on updating. You know, I know it's twenty twenty-five and we were talking about laptops earlier. We need to keep updating our stuff. We can't just keep having the same stuff we had five years ago because our technology is growing. We need to keep making the lives easier for the kids. And I urge this Board of Education to formally distance itself from those comments so that we could begin the process of moving forward and healing the wounds they have caused with the Black community. Even if it was just by an example or whatever, we just need to start healing and we need, there's so many more stuff going on in life that we need to focus on. So we need to first handle the situation so we can continue healing and handle everything that's going on with the world. Especially right now that we have ICE in the community. We all need to be together, no matter if you're Black, Pink, Purple, Blue. We are here together as the board and as a family. Thank you, guys.
So I want to endorse your statement. And while I did have a statement prepared this time, I think I'm just not gonna read it because it sounds like people don't think that I'm, that it's coming from the heart if I read. So I once again want to apologize. It truly was just a mistake that I made. I will not pretend to sit here and say that I'm an expert at this. I am not. I made a mistake on some of all my parts. The intention behind my use of African-Americans as an example was not what it's made out to be. I've definitely never said that I want African-Americans removed from the program or that I don't want the program offered to them. That, at this point, is, is just way, way off from what I said. I'm here for all students. Ms. Donaldson, I don't know if our, if our daughters attend class together, but one of the reasons why I interviewed for the position back then and why I decided to run was the dual language program. I don't know if your daughter was in my daughter's class in fourth grade, but did they not spend the entire year with a substitute teacher there? They did. And I, I had a problem with that. So I'm here for that. I have a daughter with an IEP, so special education is also something that I'm here to advocate for. And at that point, that's for all students, not just my daughters, not the Hispanic community, not the Black, or the African-American community, all, all students. I'm very upset that this has turned out to be something beyond everyone's control. I have no idea what the person behind releasing that audio, what their intention was. But my intention was never to hurt anybody or leave anybody out of any program that the district offers. I did not run on that. And so really, and Ms. Latimer, I'm looking at you. I know. You know, I, I looked up to you, literally, since first grade and I've told you that. And it truly, truly hurts that you have expressed yourself towards me the way you have, especially because I know that when we've run into each other, I know you knew how genuine I was the very first time we saw each other at Ward Seven meeting. I greeted you and you gave me a hug so tight. So for a misrepresented quote, you're going to cross me off like that. Get to know me, get to know me. And Dr. Gaddis, I don't know if you're still here, but at this point, you're the only one that has invited me to meet. Please, let's do so. I would love for you to get to know me as well. At the last board meeting, I don't know if she's here, but Ms. Folds was the only one who came up. I reached out to her and unfortunately, we weren't able to connect, but just give me the opportunity to maybe get to know me one-on-one. That goes for you too, Theodia. Get to know me, maybe get to understand me and where I was coming from that day. Ms. Donaldson, you too. Especially if our daughters are our friends. I do not want this to interfere with their friendship in any way, shape, or form. I'm, I'm open to that.
All right, thank you. And before we, we move on, I do wanna extend, you know, if we could pick up those meetings again with Ms. Latimer, Ms. Hicks, Ms. Gillespie. What was that? Sorry, Dr. Hicks. Sorry, I apologize. If we could get those scheduled back with the superintendent and I will make sure that I attend every meeting and not miss any, anything. So if we could... Okay. I don't know about that date yet, so I will double check.
Yeah, just to, just to clarify real quick, Ms. Gillespie. Yeah, you did reach out to me last week. At the last board meeting, I did ask that you reach out and let me know. So you reached out last week and you said you were gonna get back with the constituent group to let me know. I know that has flown through, been gone through Ms. Morales right now. So we do have that meeting scheduled, but it wasn't as if I was dodging the meeting by any means. So I just wanted to be sure of that. Yeah, okay, I just wanna be sure of that. Thank you. Yep, and we did connect. And once we connected there, you, you let me know that you were gonna get back to the constituent group to make sure that we could meet, at which point I've got it scheduled to do this now. So I look forward to the meetings. I welcome the meetings. I'm excited to work together with the community to figure out how we can move forward for all students for sure. And that meeting is scheduled. And we have had internal stakeholder group meetings as well, where we've brought about a diverse group of individuals, both in their rank and file, what they do in our organization, their race, their experience, male, female, so we can have some real conversations to talk about what the ongoing needs are. We are diving into the data to look back a little bit and see exactly where the data tells us, what it tells us we need to focus on for all of our students, but specifically our Black students. We also have an immediate plan in place as far as what we're going to do immediately to focus on some of the uncon- unconscious bias and racism. And then on top of that, we will have a departmental improvement plan that I'll work together with that team, along with the stakeholder groups, to make sure we can move forward in a proactive way.
So I'll, I'll check in with them just to make sure. All right, we'll move on to communications from the superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Splentis, I appreciate it. We've got a couple of different things on the evening tonight, on the board tonight. We already had our four A, which is our student board member report. Next, we have four B, which is, which is the community relations report with Ms. Brittany Walker. So if Brittany wants to come up for that, thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, the, sorry. On September thirtieth, we had our Boys and Girls Club launch party right here in this room where we were able to showcase, showcase the district-wide partnership, which brings our after-school programming to all of our elementary schools. One of the highlights of the evening, which you will see in the video, was a presentation by one of our students from Bardwell Elementary, Ms. Abir. And she spoke on behalf of her peers as far as how this experience has been to her. In addition to that, we did have the CEO. Again, you'll have some words from her in that video as well. And we'll just, without further ado, we'll go ahead and see that highlight video.
Six forty-four, the Boys and Girls Club has a new partnership with an East Aurora School District to serve thousands of students. This was the celebration and the far western suburb is the team motto echoed.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. I know she's got one other update from an exciting event we had last week as well.
Yes. So hopefully you were able to attend, but we had our Family Fall Festival on Friday. A lot of Fs. And we had approximately 1,200 participants attend. So you'll be able to see in this video some of those highlights as well. There were characters, there was lots of free treats like candy apples, churros, paletas. What else did we have there?
Hot dogs.
Hot dogs. Oh, yes. Some, some of you were passing out hot dogs.
The hot dogs are delicious, by the way.
Yes. And then there were some fun things as well as hay rides all over at Blackberry Farm. So here's that highlight video of that fun way to kick off the fall with our district.
All right. Our next item on the board report is we have our IASB Delegate Assembly. Every year during the Board III Conference, the Resolutions Committee Report is shared and outlines proposals to be acted upon at the annual meeting of the IASB Delegate Assembly. The Delegate Assembly will take place on Saturday, November 22nd, when we're at III as a board and a leadership team. The Board of Education has a voice at this assembly and the board must elect a delegate to vote on the proposals on behalf of the board. Once a delegate is chosen, Ms. Morales will register the delegate for a one-hour webinar that will take place on October 9th from noon to 1:00 PM. So if you look at our timeline right now, they just got back to us. It is October 6th. So we need to have an open conversation about who that delegate will be. And I see a lot of people looking towards Board Vice President Alivas, so I don't know if that decision's been made or not, but I'll open it up to the board for dialogue.
All right. Are you good? Are you okay with accepting?
Yep. I'm okay with accepting and I am available for, for that webinar as well.
Okay. Well, that works out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, under District Updates, we've got two different things. We've got a tax levy presentation with Liz Hennessy and Dr. Michael Engel. And then I've got a superintendent statement regarding our current parameters as well.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Can you guys, all right. We're going to go through the presentation of the 2025 tax levy? Yeah. It's, is that better? Okay. All right. So we're going to go through the timeline. This is the timeline for the tax levy adoption. Tonight, we're going to have the, obviously, the timeline and the presentation of the 2025 tax levy, the alternate bond abatement, and recommendation tonight for approval of the estimated tax levy. On November 3rd, we'll have the recommendation to adopt the 2025 tax levy. December 31st is the deadline to file with the county clerk. And then spring of 2026, we'll have the final property values released, the abatements are finalized, and taxes will be billed to the taxpayers. And then your first installment is there in June 2nd and September. Next slide. So these are the property values by type that make up the EAV for the entirety of the district. As you can see, 80% comes from residential, 14% from commercial. Farm is almost non-existent. The state railroad is at 1% and industrial at 5%. So this is the breakdown of revenues for FY25 non-audited. As you guys can see, 52% of our funds came from evidence-based funding, 7% from the state, 22% from federal grants, 14% from real estate taxes, 2% from CPPRT, and 3% from local. So these are the factors that are known. We have the 2024 Total Equalized Assess Valuation, which was a little bit over $1.2 billion. We also have the 2024 Tax Extension, not including bonds, which was $37,000,080,000. That's the amount of money that we collected from last year. That's the extension that comes to the district. The Consumer Price Index, the CPI, this is December of 2024, is also known at 2.9%. We're capped at 5%. We are a capped county. We also know the maximum levy extension for existing property for 2025 would be $38,895,994.69. Some unknown factors are the new equalized assessed valuation for '25. We have estimates right now at 11.51% increase, which would give us an estimate of $1.3 billion of EAV for 2025. We also don't know what the new limiting rate's going to be for 2025. And we don't know the exact new property for 2025, even though we got an estimate from the county of 3.5 million and change as far as new property for the district. Next slide. So how does this all compare to other school districts? As you can see, we are there in the light blue. We have the lowest property tax rate of all Kane County school districts and all surrounding school districts. We're at $3.55. The next closest is West Aurora at $4.61. The highest comparable is Central 301 at $5.92. Next slide. So this is the breakdown of the levy request. On the left-hand side are the funds and fund descriptions. As you can see, the education fund, operations, maintenance, transportation, working cash, municipal retirement, social security, special education. On the right-hand column is the levy amount, and of course, we're capped. Total cap levy would have $39,685,000. We also have a bond and interest levy at $6,562,358, less the abatement, and that's something that we're going to be discussing here in a little bit with Liz Hennessy from Raymond James. And that will, minus out, less the abatement, will give us our total tax levy for 2025. Next slide. So the budget is requesting a 4.99% levy. The Board of Education will discuss the abatement to further reduce the tax burden to existing property owners. Next slide. So this is the information that's used for Public Act 1030394. So this takes off of our annual financial review, excuse me, our annual financial records. Our expenses from Fund 10, which is the education fund, Fund 20, which is buildings and grounds, and Fund 40, transportation. These are the expenses from FY23, '24, and '25, and then you take the average and you do the ratio to your fund balances. So fund balances are ending 6/30/2025. In the Ed Fund, we have a 40.28%. And O&amp;M in Fund 20, Buildings and Grounds, it's at 228.33%, which is inclusive of the bonds that were sold, the lease certificates for the $14,975,000. And also in Fund 40, at 152.57%, inclusive of what we need to repay the state as well. And you take the total, we're at 63.1%. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to let Liz Hennessy from Raymond James go take a deeper dive into the tax abatement world.
Good evening.
Me all right?
No, good.
Okay. So let's go to the first slide. I'm going to repeat one of Dr. Engel's slides, which shows the East Aurora tax rate for 2024 compared to the other Kane County districts. As you noted, Mike, it is the lowest in Kane and surrounding districts. It's also lowest by a lot, over a dollar lower. So that's quite a benefit. Let's go to the next slide. This is the levy history and the proposed levy. Since 2015, the district has done some debt service abatements. In total, those add up to $6,500,000. Last year, in '24 levy year, the district abated $712,000. And what happens in that situation is that the district transfers money from its evidence-based funding into the bond and interest fund to make the debt service payment and reduces that cost to the taxpayer. So last year, your total levy went up 1.75% because the EAV went up so much more. Last year, it went up 12.9%. The tax rate declined by 37 cents. This year, based on the Kane County Clerk's estimate, the EAV is also going to go up by 11.5%. So that's, that's a big increase. Using the similar assumptions as Mike, you get a levy that is $38,994,270 for operations. You add that to the current debt service levy, which we have loss and collection included as well. That brings you to $45.6 million or a 4.38% increase. That's what you could expect to get based on these numbers. Dr. Engel's is suggesting levying more than that in order to get all that is due to the district under the property tax limitation law at the, the 4.99%. So I'm looking at what you, you might get. Okay, let's go to the next page. I have three options to consider when we talk about debt service abatement. That's, that's my topic for tonight. So again, this is the option one levy plan, full levy, no abatement. As we mentioned, it will most likely go up 4.38%. That means the tax rate is going to go down, though, because of the very high estimate from the county clerk. So you might ask, how can the whole levy go up 4.38% when CPI, which is part of the tax limitation law, is going only up 2.9%? Well, the reason it goes up 4.38% is because we abated last year $712,000. If we don't do that this year, then the debt levy goes up by almost 12%. So combined, the debt levy being much smaller than the operating levy, you get a combined increase of 4.38% in the no-abatement option. Let's go to the next page. This is Levy Plan 2, abating $350,000. That means taking $350,000 of that evidence-based funding, transfer it to bond and interest. This will result in a net increase of 3.57%. So certainly less than the 4.32% abating $350,000. The next option is letting, abating $718,000. And that number is very close to the amount the district abated last year. It keeps the bond and interest extension very close to what it was last year at $5,909,000. In this case, the levy goes up 2.73%, so actually less than the CPI of 2.9% in option 3. So we look at this based on the home. And we have now, Google artificial intelligence can pick out the median home value in '24 versus '25 for the East Aurora School District. So that's taking all the home sales in the district. And last year, the median, median home sale value was $320,000. This year is $326,000. So the home sale value averaged across the district only went up 1.9%. Now, home sales in different pockets of the district can go up more than that. But on average, that's what the whole school district housing values changed. So when we have the EAV increasing 11%, the home only going up 1.9%, that makes the tax rate go down. So for this analysis, I would suggest you focus on the percent change in the levy. If we do no abatement, that's 4.38% increase. If we do $350,000 abatement, that's 3.57% increase. If we do the full $718,000 abatement, that's 2.73% increase. But for the home, because the tax rate's going down, their taxes paid may go down, unless they're in one of those areas where home values are going up more than the average across the school district. So I'm happy to answer any questions. There's certainly more options we could look at, but this is kind of consistent with what we've been looking at in terms of options over the last several years. No abatement, a middle-of-the-road abatement, or this, kind of the same amount of abatement that you've done in the prior years. But it is important to remember that these abatements aren't for free. They're reducing dollars that are going to kids because we're moving it from evidence-based funding into the bond and interest to pay the debt.
So you've got 2025 projection. We're not talking about school here. You're just using AI to generate what you think the rest of this year will be for median?
No, that's from Kane County. Kane County gave us the EAV projected.
Projection, okay. So it's not actual. Okay.
Yeah. So that's 11.5%, which last year it was 12.9. They gave us that high projection last year too, and it did come out right, even though it's surprising.
Okay.
Because we don't see the home values really going up over the district.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson, I mean, you have a lot of knowledge with the tax levy. What, what option do you suggest?
The number two, the middle of the road. I think it's important that we continue to keep moving along. You know, as much as people say, this has really created a lot of interest in buying a home on the east side. And I think it's very important that, that we still remain with our taxpayers here because it's a big deal that if you own a house of that, you know, that value, if you're living on the east side, it is still about $1,000 lower because of the school district. And that our families really need, because I think, you know, we should be fair and equitable to everyone. But I think it does help, you know, grow our neighborhoods and create some momentum for people to come and buy their houses on the east side.
Do we have any other questions? We have a consensus with the middle of the ground?
Three. Too much?
It wouldn't be. I just always, we kind of always pick the middle of the road. So, yeah.
Well, she mentioned how option number three is very comparable to last year's option. Is there a reason why we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to do that?
You know, it doesn't make that much of a difference. Dr. Engel, have you run these numbers into the budget?
So that's a great question. Okay.
Okay.
So these numbers are actually going to be for next year's budget, not for this year's? And given the movement from tier one to tier two in evidence-based funding, so instead of receiving, let's say, like in prior years, about $6 million of new evidence-based funding and receiving $2 million being tier two, to give back kind of a third of it, of any new money coming into, into the district is going to be quite a bit for, for next year, quite honestly. So.
So in layman's terms, you're suggesting option A or?
I would, I would, I, I don't like the, and Liz, you can help me find.
I would, I would, I, I don't like the, and Liz, you can help me find a word for this one, but if we go from a large abatement the year prior to almost no abatement, it's almost like a, a big slingshot up in the tax rate and people will feel that.
That is correct.
Yes, versus kind of middle-of-the-road, slowly kind of easing back up. And if you look at all three of, of these examples here, that, and this is obviously the average of averages here. Each one of these is a negative payment. So the first option would be they're paying a hundred and sixty-eight dollars less than what they paid the year before. The middle-of-the-road option, a hundred and ninety-three. And again, the final option, two hundred and twenty dollars less than last year. And there's not too many communities that could honestly say their taxes went down versus last year.
Dr. Engel, the only difference would be, though, if you had a house that the price increased substantially more than that average of one point nine percent, right? Just for full transparency.
Correct, and I, I believe we looked into a few that we saw, actually, about a hundred dollar increase on, on a few of these. And again, the home averages were much more.
They were up close to six percent when we were looking at that, weren't they, Liz? When we were taking a look at it, if, if they went up by a hundred dollars, so it was a house that had increased by about six percent?
Yeah, by, actually, nine percent.
Okay, nine percent, yeah.
Yeah.
And we get, for the most part, I think this is going to create some stability and it'll get us a chance to better tweak our budget because we do have negotiations coming up, too. So and we have to be cognizant, and I will still say, decrease in enrollment's going to hurt us, you know? Because that comes, you know, with next year. But we just don't know. These are very uncertain times.
So do we have a consensus with the middle-ground, number-two option, what you're suggesting?
That's option one. Three, I think it looks a little bit much, given our current environment and climate right now.
Option. Well, if we can afford to do two, we do two. If we need the money, we do one. I mean, if it's a hundred dollars for an expensive home, that's not too bad. I mean, if we.
Anya?
Okay.
Two.
Two?
Two for me.
Brian? Okay.
Two.
Second option is, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Liz, appreciate it.
You should probably put that in the form of a motion and, and vote on it. Isn't it coming back?
Yeah, we're not taking action tonight.
You're not taking action on it tonight, okay, but that does need to be. Just direction, as she said, yeah.
No, that's a couple of weeks ago.
Anything else for communications from the superintendent?
That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to section five, a motion to approve the following consent agenda as listed. Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes. All right, do we have any introductions for personnel? No, okay. All right, moving on to Finance and Personnel Committee with Ms. Reyes.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. The Finance Committee meeting met earlier today at five-thirty here at the Admin Center. And we will meet once again on Monday, November third, 2025, at five-thirty here at the Admin Center. And I will have a report of today's meeting then. We do have some action items. Six point B point one, motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-six bank signature cards.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any questions? Hearing none, secretary, call the roll, please.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Six point B point two, motion to adopt the resolution estimating the 2025 tax levy.
So we're, we're voting on the three different, no, we're just voting on the estimate, and then we'll vote on it later, okay. So I'll move.
Second. Sec, uh, any questions? Hearing none, secretary, call the roll, please.
Reyes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Six point B point three, motion to approve, approve one FTE one-to-one Special Education Teacher Assistant at Oak Park Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, secretary, call the roll, please.
LaShay?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Six point B point four, motion to approve one FTE one-to-one Special Education Teacher Assist, Assistant at East Aurora High School.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Six point B point five, motion to approve one band overload at Simmons Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, secretary, call the roll, please.
Olivas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Six point B point six, motion to approve the Administrative Procedures Project with the Illinois Association of School Board.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Reyes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Six point B point seven, motion to approve revisions to the IASB Press Board Policies A through C as listed.
A through M, maybe?
Oh, sorry, yes, A through M as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yeah.
Olivas?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Moving on to Curriculum and Programs Committee with Mr. Olivas.
Thank you. I'm going to try to make it as brief as possible. We met on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six, here at the Admin Center. We had some assessment updates from ISB and MAP provided by Dr. Ami Engel, where the document outlined major updates in the Illinois State Board of Education, ISB benchmarks, and the NWEA MAP norm for 2025, where the Illinois created their right size, its proficiency benchmarks after finding they were among the most restrictive in the nation. So they have a new system of introduced on unified performance level from above proficient, for proficient, approaching proficient, and below proficient, would adjust cut scores to better align with the college and work, workplace, workforce readiness. At the same time, the NWEA re-normed the MAP assessment to reflect past COVID performance shifts. The new norms mean that the same bridge score now correspond to higher perform, percentile ranking, and these changes aim to provide more accurate measures of student performance. We also had a school improvement plan by Waldo Middle School. Principal Eileen Roberts and her staff kind of gave us a summary of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year where math achievements proficiencies were less than seventeen point twenty-two percent. And for, that was for math and six point six, uh, three point six-five proficiency on IAR. And literacy achievement, we had a, believe, a ten point eight-four achievement benchmark for MAP. Sorry, that was for IAR. And about thirteen percent median achievement on MAP. They also kind of talked about highlighting a need to strengthen positive school culture and improving student achievement. They talked about different goals for the, by the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, where they want to meet or exceed grade level expectation in literacy by six percent across all report groups by 2026, also in IAR. By the end of twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Waldo Middle School will increase the performance of students meeting or exceeding grade level expectation in math by six percent across all reported groups as measured by the spring 2026 IAR. Also, Waldo will reduce the number of daily referrals by ten percent by fostering positive relations, relations between staff and students. We also heard from Cowherd Middle School with Principal Jackie Gibson and her staff. They also gave us a summary of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, where they stated that seventeen point eight of the student achievement grade level, grade level expectations on MAP, five point seven reach proficiency on IAR. Literacy results show that twenty-one point eight met in MAP and only fifteen point three demonstrated proficiency on IAR. Their daily attendance rate was ninety-one point nine. I mean, chronic absenteeism affected about twenty-three percent of students overall. Some of the goals they are meeting for, by spring of 2026 was to raise the percentage of students meeting or exceeding grade level expectation by six percent. They will accomplish by studying lessons, by using questioning and discussion techniques that make learning interactive. By spring of 2026, they will increase the percentage of students meeting or exceeding grade level math expectation by six percent. And by June 2026, the school aims to achieve at least ninety-five percent average daily attendance. We also had a, a presentation about Aaron's Law and Mutual Ground Expansion. The memo recommends a spending East Aurora School District 131 partnership with Mutual Ground to provide Aaron's Law education to students in early learning through fifth grade. The expansion aligns with Board Policy six point six zero and supports the district's strategic goal of educating equity. The proposed cost is twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and will be fully grant-funded through IDEA. We also had a presentation by Ms. Martinez and Ms. Diaz with parent engagement for 2025, 26. Gave us a, a few plans and dates where parent parental engagement. But the district introduced some of the items they will be focusing with the parent groups with the African-American Parent Association, EA DADS, the Bilingual Parent Advisory Council. In addition, Student Services plans on introducing a new parent group dedicated to collaboration, feedback, and support from families. The parent liaison will continue to bridge the gap between schools and families. I want to mention three events they also highlighted. Parent University will be November eighth, Las Posadas, December sixth, and Black History Month Celebration on February twenty-sixth. We finalize with the tennis and enrollment. As of September eleventh, 2025, the total enrollment was eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five students. As September fifth, twenty twenty-five, district average attendance was ninety-three point five-four. And we had, as of then, registration queue, it was twenty-eight students, and we adjourned at six-twenty-nine. I do have an action item on here. We have a motion to approve the expansion with Mutual Ground for early learning through fifth grade.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
LaShay?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yeah.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
That concludes your reports, sir?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to Building and Grounds Committee with Mr. LaShay.
Thank you. We had a meeting today at six o'clock. I will have a report at the next meeting, which is November third, Monday, six o'clock, right here. And I have no action items, so back to you.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student discipline, workers' compensation, and the appointment, employment, performance, compensation, and dismissal of a specific employee.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Secretary, call the roll, please.
Valencia?
Yes.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
And we do not have action. Motion to reconvene from Executive Session?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll, please.
Cepuentes?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Olivas?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
LaShay?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Secretary, call the roll, please.